Jeff.
Yep.
Welcome to our work session this evening and you have the agenda, does anything need to be added to the agenda? Do we know of? I don't have anything. One thing I do want to announce is for some reason, the company I work for requires me to be out of town on the 12th and I've asked that we change the date to either the Wednesday, the 14th or Thursday, the 15th. If we could do that, I'd appreciate it because I would like to be there for the next board meeting. So Monday night, I'll be out of town, Tuesday night, I'll be out of town, but I'll be back Wednesday night or Thursday night. Something about a required safety meeting that I have to go to down in Greenville, North Carolina.
Thursday night would be a bad night because I gotta go watch my grandson play football.
I know there'll be a lot of conflicts. Wednesday night would be horrible. Wednesday night's terrible.
I can't do any of that, but I'll do that.
I mean, you can do Wednesday night, raise your hand. All right, who can do Thursday night, raise your hand. Okay, so that's one, two, three, four, is it five? Five could be here, yeah, one, two, three.
Six.
Six.
Six. Okay, looks like Thursday night would be the better night. You gonna go that far out?
To the 19th.
How many of them?
We did those emergency plans and get women to.
Two, nine, ten.
The 19th better for everybody.
I'm demanding, I'm demanding.
Monday, the 19th always look like, everybody raise your hand and come on the 19th. Sound like a 19th.
Alex, do that.
No, no.
I can't do a Saturday.
19th it is.
Okay, 19th.
I apologize for that, but it's one of those rare times that they have a meeting on a Monday night, so anyway. That's who pays the bills.
So we've decided Monday.
Monday, the 19th, if that's okay with everybody. All right. Next on our agenda, we have Mr. Mark Shepard to give us a little briefing on this sixth grade ruling that the high school association put us into, or sports association put us into.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. If you haven't heard, yes, the state board has said that the local LEAs can choose to allow sixth graders to participate in sports with the rest of the middle schoolers. And I guess one thing we were waiting on was our conference that we compete in and they met today. It's the Blue Ridge Conference and they basically voted to allow it based on each LEA making their own decision to participate in that or not. So they will allow you to play, they're not going to make everyone play with sixth graders or they're not gonna say we all have to do one or the other. So if we choose to do it, our kids can play whether the rest of them do or not. And from the report I got from the meeting, most of the LEAs are kind of twiddling their thumbs, you know, waiting to see what someone finally does as far as pulling the trigger, whether to do it or not. I have gathered a little information besides that conference meeting on the insurance. You know, that was one of the things we talked about, how much the insurance cost might be. And I talked to our agent, they talked to the company because we thought maybe they would charge more as a higher risk of a sixth grade kid. Company says, no, same, same cost, just, you know, if it's, for example, 15 per kid, seventh and eighth, that's what it'll be for, for sixth grade as well. And basically, we just kind of, it's like a guesstimate, basically. We don't know exactly how many kids, like Spencer Reeve told me, he goes with about 100 at Bethel. So he would probably go with like 120 if he was guesstimating for, you know, sixth grade participation as well. The high schools, they go with around 300, so they would probably guesstimating around, I'm sorry, the other middle schools will be talking around, Canton Middle talking about 35, 40, Lansville Middle, as high as maybe 50. But there's really no way to tell until, you know, you open the door and let them try it.
That's gonna be for all schools except for.
Except for football.
Has the conference talked to any about, you remember the old junior high model where you had a seventh and eighth grade team and the ninth grade team? Have they talked about having a sixth and seventh grade JV team?
They, they did talk about that and that's pretty much cost prohibitive for everybody. You know, with additional coaches, additional uniforms. Yeah, travel, the whole deal, they, everybody shot away from that.
Mark, what are those schools not doing, Buncombe, they have fifth and sixth grade schools now.
Well, and, and we talked about that, you know, the first conversation, one of the first ones that Dr. Garrett had was with Tony Baldwin and definitely against it. And I think that was the biggest reason why. We don't play any of the Buncombe teams or Asheville City. The Blue Ridge Conference, you know, is, is, is Macon, Jackson, us, you know, Pope, Henderson, and that's pretty much it, Transylvania with Brevard Middle. So there's 12, you know, 12 teams, it's a nice even conference that they like the way it works. And that basically developed because for so long, we wanted to play Buncombe County teams to not have to travel so far, but they've, they've kind of wanted to have their own little, their own little conference within the county and it does keep their travel nice and tidy. So they kind of do their, they're kind of on an island.
I've even thought, I mean, since they moved the sixth graders up, I thought they should let them participate all along. Say, I mean, if they're good enough to go to middle school, they ought to be able to participate. And they say, not including football, but these cases where you've got a kid maybe way overweight for he can't play youth football, that he could play middle school football because of his weight. And, and they ought to, they ought to look at that and let a kid that, that can't participate down in the youth league, if he wants to and his parents say that, you know, it's fine for him to participate in football, they ought to give him that opportunity.
I think that kind of may be why they're doing this whole thing, that might be included later on. It's kind of my thoughts as well, while those kids are oversized.
I agree with you, the only, the only thing is, if you do, if you weren't doing football. But even in basketball, you know, I understand it may be cost prohibitive to have two teams playing on different days. You know, you can increase the number of kids that you keep on the team and play two quarters, a JV two quarter same day. But let those kids, I mean, if they're gonna participate and have the opportunity to participate, let them start developing under that because, you know, the fundamentals that they're gonna learn, the teaching camaraderie that they're gonna learn at that age, it's just better in organized school programs.
Well, two, two of the different principals, when, when talking to them about this, told me that they are definitely looking for ways to get sixth graders more involved in the school. It's like welcome to middle school, but you can't do anything until you're in seventh grade. And so they're, they're excited about the opportunity and they're good with, with football being off the table for now. And that's from the state. So that would have to be, you know, them moving toward football before we could even have that on the table. But I see your point, Walter, because I know of a couple of boys right now on my grandson's team that, you know, they're, they're overweight, but they're still in good shape, they, they could probably play middle school ball. But.
The other thing is, is your winter sports, they have cuts anyway. I mean, they only roster seven Stevens unless you've got a really good sixth grader.
It does happen. I mean, you're gonna have to have a stud in sixth grade.
I mean, I'm afraid he's not gonna make it, he or she won't make it. So it's might, I mean, you might not have that many sixth graders anymore.
Yeah.
And the latest, I do agree with what Bobby's saying about doing a, I mean, a youth does a fifth quarter. I mean, even before the game or during halftime or something, let the other ones play. I mean, that might be something that the politics could look at. I mean, you wouldn't have to have referees, I mean, you could, an assistant coach could ref or something, you know.
Yeah, I mean, that.
It's getting more and more complicated.
I can see the conference moving toward that if they wanted, you know, to keep a few more kids and do a fifth quarter before the game.
I mean, in the long run, it could have a program tremendous.
But it feels. I don't think we can predict what the conference is gonna do until, until they know how many of the systems have said, yes, we like varsity play. So, you know, in my mind, the decision forty is, are we gonna go, are we gonna go there with our sixth graders? And then in three months or six months or a year, then the conference will have, you know, one district that's doing it or all of them, somewhere in between. Then they'll be able to, you know, then they'll be able to go where we're gonna have a JV, we're going to do a fifth quarter, we're going to do whatever. It's sort of hard to predict what the playing arrangements are gonna look like until we know who all is going to be. And there are a couple of districts that are, you know.
We've only got two, you've got Rutherford and then you've got McDowell, the only, is the only other one. They started with fall sports.
We could prove that Martin, you know, then direct Martin Champion, that guy was stealing the history.
Here, Peewee.
I'm sort of like, well, first of all, I've been in support of sixth graders playing sports ever since they've moved them up there. And you go back to, going back to sixth graders making a team, it's just like anybody making a team. It's gonna be up to the coach, if, if a kid's good enough to make a team, if you've only got one team, you ain't got a JV or varsity, you've just got one basketball team, then that coach is gonna have to make that shit decision if he wants a girl or a boy on that team to either start letting them develop so that they are going to be good when they do get to the point that they can play. And we know Wayneville Middle and Canton Middle, they're gonna have, they've got a lot of people that's going for them in sports. But it's only gonna help Bethel Middle to have sixth graders come out and try out. It's, it's gonna help them. So I mean, I'm completely in support of this because, I mean, I, I know some girls that's on my little girl softball team. It's gonna be pretty good, that might make the basketball team in the fall if we pass this.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll just tell you, I would like to see this pass put in place so that we have, our sixth graders have a chance to do the fall sports. I mean, that's what I want. That, I mean, that's what I want.
How's it gonna impact the youth programs in this county? That's what bothers me.
I don't, I don't see it hugely impacting them. Probably, everybody talked about the biggest, you know, non-cut sports that would be affected would be cross country and track. Where it's just wide open, you know, and anybody can come. And I wouldn't see that being, pulling so much away from the, the established softball and baseball leagues. I would see that being kids who probably aren't doing anything else anyway, which is a good thing. Because, you know, maybe they're not that great at hitting or they don't want to be on a team, but they can, they can run, you know, whatever event in track and get to be involved in something, so that's a good thing.
Sorry to interrupt, you mentioned the youth, youth sports. My little girl played basketball at Clyde last year. And I guess 10 year, or however they do the age. Clyde didn't even have enough kids to do the older kids that was in the sixth grade. So see, they only had, they went up to Midgets, how's it go, Walt? I can't never remember my.
Midget, Midget is the oldest.
Yeah, the top, the upper, the upper class did not have enough to even make it at that point. So, so are we gonna hurt the youth? I don't think you don't have that many sixth graders start making a team. And actually, if they make a middle school team, you're opening up a position at the youth that somebody might not get to play now.
When I was down there in Raleigh at the legislative committee meeting down there at the school association, I asked that question, I just wanted to poll, you know, what everybody was thinking about doing. And it was all over the map, it was, it was, some of them had already passed, yeah, we're gonna let them play. I think it was like two districts that I saw and they weren't the ones you mentioned. And then there was one district that said they deferred till next year. I said, so y'all just kicked it down the road till next year, till next year.
What was their reasoning?
Same thing, affecting youth leagues, whether they were ready to play or not versus other kids that are more mature. The differential between maturities between the sixth grade, seventh grade and eighth graders, all, all the reasons that we already know. And then you asked the districts that had passed it and why they were gonna do it. But I got a feeling from that group, that the majority of them were not gonna pass it until next year to get a full year going. That was kind of the consensus I got. I mean, what we do is what we do here, this is, you know, how you would carry, we do what this board wants to do.
I tell you, I feel like if we're gonna do it, we need to do it, I mean, the volleyball's already started. You can't do it now. Winter sport rolls around, we ought to jump right in on it, that's my opinion.
I fully, fully supported the, I think for it to be effective though, you have to have, for it to be effective and being developmental, you gotta think about that JV program. You know, if you only get one or two kids, we spent a lot of time on the decision. We could be much more effective having them.
Well, that kind of brings us back around to the financial aspect of it. And a couple of the principals wanted me to mention to you all that if it, if it does take more money, you know, for example, if a track team like Wayneville Middle who has a very active running community and already a very active track and cross country program, if you were to add 15, 20, 25 kids to that, which is very seeable there, you're looking at another assistant coach. In a year when they're already having to come up with money for their assistant coaches and uniforms. And, you know, they said, don't worry about that, it, it'll just be a tee shirt for each kids. We'll tell them to wear black shorts like we have done in the past. You're still looking at 500, you know, a thousand bucks plus a coach. And, you know, they're not asking for some, you know, money amount commitment, just the awareness that it could cost more money, that they don't necessarily have budgeted right now to do this. Not huge amounts, but something to take under consideration.
You also have like traveling too, you have to take two buses now to the Warren. And I talked to Trevor about that, about how you might have to have like a traveling team and then a team that participates in the home meets and stuff.
I would say if you, if you all choose to do it, if you like choose to take it up Monday night or the next Monday night and vote for it now, it might be good if you plan on doing the winter season too, go ahead and vote for it so we can get all that insurance in place and, you know, those other considerations taken into account and give us a couple of months for that before we start.
So you're saying effective immediately when we vote that we're gonna play kids or we're gonna?
We will not play fall, the conference did not vote for fall to be played, they, they would start with the winter.
I just wanted clarification of that.
Yeah, they, they approved it starting with winter sports this year.
And that's basketball, wrestling. Wrestling.
It shouldn't be a stretch for some of them, like Wayneville Middle School volleyball, I watched them play just the other day. They got a JV team already.
Right.
So it's, just hang on to your uniforms, one more of your name there, is what we.
Yeah.
I think a consensus of the board is we'd like to get something done on it, so we'll add it to the agenda.
More questions?
That's interesting discussion, I would've thought the other way myself.
It seems like it laid dormant all these years and then all of a sudden it was on fire and I don't know where it came from.
I think there was, I did get a call from somebody that had a question about something in the law, whether like charter schools could participate in our programs now. And I think I talked to Dr. Noldby about that.
The way that it reads is that LEA, local districts and charter schools can decide if their sixth graders participate. It did not give the provision for charter school students to play at, at other schools on their. But there are charters across the state that have teams and they're in their own conference. And so in that situation, they would have the opportunity to play their teams, but would not or give that opportunity.
I think that just needs.
Just for the record, you know, we, we want 100% of the child. We understand that in competitive activities, you're all in. And it's hard to be, it's hard to be a bear or a matinee or, or a blue demon or whatever. It's hard to be any of those things unless you're all in. It's a, it's a full commitment.
So we'll take that up at the board meeting.
Yep, thanks, Walter. Mr. Todd.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I just want to take a few minutes to talk a little bit about transportation services and, and really look at, where were you when the lights went out? Take a few minutes to look at just what that looks like and to give you a little bit of an update on, on how transportation services is designed and really to have three conversations. One about, one about routing and then two about drivers that we, that we need to have as we get closer to the end, end of, of the, the presentation. Haywood County Schools runs currently 74 buses, those are 74 regular school buses that run every day. We have 12 spare buses and 21 activity buses, regular route activity buses that are shared amongst the schools to take on trips that our yellow buses are not eligible by state law to be used for. So the reason we have, have white buses is because legally, there's just simply some trips we can't put students on and take a yellow bus for. That's a little bit different from other states, but it's something unique to North Carolina. So we, we maintain a fleet of 100 plus buses to get our students to and from school as well as to a variety of, of after school events and field trips that might take place related to the school. Last year, our yellow school bus fleet trans, took 751, 751,733 miles worth of travel to get our students to and from school. And for us, basically, our, our calculations are a year behind. So when we look at the cost per mile and the cost per student, those are from 14, 15. We will not get the 15, 16 data until all of the, all of last year's data is compiled and looked at. So usually, we don't get those numbers from DPI until October. So we're looking at these next two numbers at really the, the year before last numbers. $270, $2.77 a mile for every mile we travel on a yellow bus is what it cost us. And per student, it cost us about $600. One of the things that we must do as an organization with the 10 staff members I have that work at the transportation department, they are responsible for keeping those buses and managed and prepared and safe to travel. And, and many people forget just how much of a burden that is to be a mechanic and to realize that the work you do has, has the lives and the safety of our children riding on it every day. When you change the brakes on a school bus and then put that bus back out there in the fleet, there's a lot of, there's a lot of responsibility that they carry on their shoulders in doing that. And in many cases, that's something we just simply forget happens in the background in order for school to take place. But the state of North Carolina comes in once a year and inspects our buses and gives us a rating. Two years ago, we were 22nd in the state with our yellow bus score and 39th in the state with our white bus score. And we talked a lot about that, we worked hard last year. Our guys put in a lot of, a lot of time trying to improve our standing in the state. And when we got our results back at the end of this year, looking at all the schools, we were ninth in the state. We look at our yellow bus inspections, we were fifth in the west with yellow bus inspections. And we were number one in the state with our white bus inspections. Now, I'm gonna say that with a caveat, not that that was a great thing, we want to be proud of it. But they inspect one bus and to be real honest with you, for districts our size and smaller, it becomes a luck of the draw. They picked a really good bus that day. And I'm not, I'm not saying that to try to discount the fact that that's where we are at, but, but everybody in, in transportation services understands that. That when they're inspecting one white activity bus, that we could just have easily have had an activity bus that came back in the night before, after midnight from, from a, a ballgame and the coach just didn't feel like cleaning it up, thought he'd get to it the next morning and we got on it before that happened and we could have had a totally different kind of score than what we had just simply because of that. But we are very proud of the work they put in to get us there. That, that says that we're carrying, you know, we're doing a good job of keeping our buses safe and ready for our students to be on them when they travel on those buses from day to day. One of the things that a lot of people don't understand is that the state actually, after we buy a bus, after the, the, the school board votes to buy a yellow school bus and puts that bus into the fleet, that from that point on, the state will replace it. That you no longer have to buy that bus again when it becomes 20 years old, that that bus is replaced by the state of North Carolina after you make that initial investment. But they do have a schedule in which they have to do that. For buses 14 years or less, has to have 300,000 miles. Whereas if it's over 20 years old, it's gotta have 150,000 miles. And what that means for us is that we've got to move buses around and sometimes that causes a little bit of agitation to drivers who don't like change. But unfortunately, if you've got a driver that's got a 4,000 mile route, well, if you take that 4,000 mile route over 20 years, they're not gonna have enough miles in 20 years to be able to get that bus replaced at 150,000 miles. And so at some point during that bus's lifespan, it has to be moved around in order to make that happen. And so that's why many of you probably saw this year where some of our bus numbers changed. And that's probably a process that while we don't want that to happen every single year for every single bus route, it's gonna have to happen in order for our buses to get the number of miles they need. So at least by that point that they get to be 20 years old, the state is ready to give us a new bus for that bus. Because what we found is that after 20 years of, of age, that bus becomes incredibly expensive for us to operate and it becomes hard to find parts for it. You know, you're looking for a, a part for a 28-year-old bus, you're digging around in, in places you probably shouldn't be digging around to find parts for school buses. And so in order to keep a healthy fleet, that's one of the things we, we do want to try to do. And the way that we've, we've approached that, the way that we've talked to our drivers about it, is we basically have told them that when we get new buses in, those buses are gonna be placed strategically on long routes so that we can get the majority of those bus miles onto those buses when they're new, when they're under warranty. Because it is much easier to have a brand-new bus under warranty driving 15,000 or 20,000 miles a, a year rather than taking a bus that's 20 years old and expecting it to, to ride like that every single day. It's just, it's just a much more productive way for us to maintain a fleet. When we look at our budget, the majority of our cost, when we look at our, our, our state budget for transportation goes into staffing. It goes into paying mechanics and paying school bus drivers. And so 73% of that budget is taken up with that and that's, that's pretty much a fixed cost. That's not something that we have a lot of room to save money on. And, and the next piece of that, the 8% that we pay for fuel, that was last year's fuel cost, was 8% of our budget. And we realized that last year was a very good year when we look at fuel cost. You know, our fuel cost last year on average was somewhere around about $1.50 a gallon for diesel fuel. Keep in mind, we do not have to pay the federal excise tax, so we get it much cheaper than, than what you might see it at the pump. And so what that means is that we have to be prepared if the gas prices go back up to capture that. And the way we capture that was with our supplies and parts. And so there's, there's very little room there to wiggle when it comes to, to trying to make that mud budget meet, meet at the, meet at the end of the year. One of the really good things about the way that this budget works is that there's a way for us to actually add money back into our state budget. Our budget is basically calculated on a couple of things. And those, those two, the two primary things are the budget rating and the funding base. Our budget rating is given to us by the state and it's the state's calculation of how efficient we were in running our buses. And what they basically look is how much money did it cost us to run our buses last year? How many buses did we actually use and how many students did we transport? And those three figures are taken together to give us an efficiency rating. And so let's say that that efficiency rating was 98%. Well, then at the end of the year, they'll take the money that we spent in our funding base, which is all the money that we might spend out of state funds or out of local funds for eligible expenses and the state has a list of those eligible expenses. And they'll take all of those expenses and they'll multiply that by 98% and that's what we would get. So if last year, we spent $1.7 million on eligible expenses for transportation out of either state or local, we would get the next year in our budget 98% of that. So what that means is that if you're being incredibly efficient, you're gonna get all the money back that you put into transportation. But if you're not being efficient, then you're going to have to capture some of those costs out of a local budget line. And so it really does put the responsibility on, on transportation directors to run an efficient fleet. Because by running an efficient fleet, the state is gonna say, we're gonna pay your. to pay your expenses. Whereas if you choose to run a, a, a less-than-efficient fleet, then those expenses fall back on the shoulders of the local budget. And we all know that, that that's, that we've been in a, in a tough place with our local budget in the last year. And so that's the last thing we want to do, is add some of those costs back to local, which, which, which really means we have to look at being as efficient as we possibly can and create our budget. The good part of this is, is that if we decided as, as an organization that we wanted to put some money back into transportation, let's say that we decided as, as a local body wanted to put $100,000 back into transportation, and we spent that $100,000 on eligible expenses, then the next year, the state would take and give you basically whatever percentage of that your efficiency rating would allow you to have. So if you've got 100% efficiency rating and, and the local body put $100,000 into transportation for a one, in a one-time investment, the next year, the state would take that and give you that money back as, as a state allotment, as long as you're maintaining your efficiency. So you're actually able to increase your state budget with the, by putting that money in, 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 in a single first time. And I'll talk a little bit about why that's important a little bit later in, in the presentation. Next thing we want to talk about is route planning. Route planning is important if we're going to be efficient. And so if we look at that cost, $2.77 a mile, and, and we take that and multiply that out, what that means is $2.77 a mile times 180 school days, which is what the state budgets us on, is $498 for every single mile that we travel. So that means that if we can look at our, at our transportation management plan, and we find a place where we can save a mile on, on a single route, that, that mile can save us $500, but that mile can be multiplied very quickly, because most of the time, we travel on, on a bus route, we're going to tra, travel on it twice. We transfer, travel on it with an elementary bus, we tra, travel on it with a middle school, high school bus, and we do it twice a day. So if we can find a mile to save, we can very easily save two grand out of our budget by simply cutting that mile off of that trip. But the same is true on the other side. If all of a sudden, we've got a school that really needs us to cha, make a change to, to how we do transportation, that's going to cost us 25 additional miles or 30 additional miles. Well, you take those 30 additional miles and you, and you multiply it by the, the $500 there per mile, basically, and you see that adds up really quickly with how much those miles could cost when you put those back on the fleet. So it really is one of those moments where in order to be efficient, you've got to watch how many miles you actually travel. One of the things with this, this, this kind of leads into is a discussion on our bus routes, and this is in our board policy, and this is kind of sets the expectations for me. This is the guidance that you've created for me on how we create routes. We want to do our best to get within one mile of every single person in our district's home that we can. Now, we realize there are going to be places we simply cannot get to with a school bus. You cannot take an eight-foot-wide, 40-foot-long school bus and drive it to some of the places in Haywood County that, that parents may want us to go to. But there are many places we certainly can get to. Beyond that, the second part of this, it kind of gives us some, some guidance, because there's always going to be those parents that are really going to want us to, to, to provide door-to-door service to their child. And door-to-door service robs us of efficiency. It's not something we can choo, we can choose to do it, but it's going to cost money, and that money's got to come from somewhere. So here's, here's how we're doing that right now. We are, for the most part, trying to stay on state-town maintained roads and on ma, main thoroughfares to get students within a mile of home, and there's a lot of roads we have to travel in order to do that. If we are looking at adding a road, let's say that a parent calls us and says, I need you to come up into this community and, and pick my child up. First question we ask, of, of course, is can we? Is, is it physically possible for us to get a bus up in there, turn that bus around? Is the road wide enough, not just for a school bus, but for a school bus to meet something on this road without us being off one edge of the road?
And the answer is?
And, and the answer sometimes?
Yes.
And the answer is sometimes?
No problem.
Yes.
Go up there, and then you got to cut down three trees to get it there.
That's exactly right. And a lot of people just don't understand what it takes to get a be, big vehicle into those places, you know, or, or they're looking at the road itself and not necessarily the overhang and the fact that we're going to be replacing, you know, lights on a bus every time we, you know, every, every couple of weeks for, for driving up in there. And so we have to be very patient and very, very tender when we try to explain that to parents, and sometimes they understand that. But the, the last one on there is 10 or more riders. In other words, if, if we have a community that we want, we want to go into, our board policy says that we look at and say, you know, if we're going to, if we're going to move off of our main route and take a ride and go up in this holler up in here to take these, these kids home, how many kids are we taking home? And the board policy says that number is 10. And, and I'm fine with that number, but I want to make sure you're fine with that number and point that out to you, make sure that you guys understand that, because this is the time of year that we always have concerns, and we have parents that come in and say, I really want you to come pick my child up, and here's where we live, and here's why I need that done. The problem is, is that when we, when we say yes to that, we have to say yes to, usually that means saying yes to an elementary bus, it means saying yes to a high school bus, and it means saying yes to everybody else that has a very consistent argument for the same kind of area. And, and what that does is expands bus routes, it makes it a little bit longer for us to get home. You know, we've got, we've got students that, that live in spaces where right now, even if you left Tuscaloosa, went to Wayne's Middle School, and then drove straight to their house, it still would take an hour or more to get, to get those kids home. And, 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 and then you've got to, to deal with how do you, how, how do you get that and all the other kids that are on that bus taking off? We do our very best to, to try not to pick kids up before 6 o'clock, and I know there's a few we have to pick up before 6 o'clock, and I hate that. We do our best to try not to pick kids up before 6 o'clock in the morning. We do our best to try to have all of our kids home by 5 o'clock in the afternoon. We've got some that are beyond that time. It, it is, it is not feasible for us to get a bus to, to Waterville, for instance, by, by 5 o'clock in the afternoon if we leave school with, with a group of kids at 3 o'clock. Just, it's just physically not something that can happen. But we do try our best to try to minimize that time as much as we possibly can. I just want to make sure that, that you're comfortable with this, because as we, you know, as we go into a new school year, we always have those parents that are upset and complain because we're not bringing their child to the door. And so I think that, that was one of the first things I want to just have a conversation about and make sure that you guys are satisfied with what that policy reads, and, and if there's changes that we need to make, you know, thi, this is kind of the time to address it before it becomes a heated conversation and passions about children, you know, get involved with it while we have a rational mind.
Well, now, when you say 10 or more, has that always been a policy? I notice the policy number 63.
That, that, that is similar to, to several districts that have, have very similar policy. This is not something we've articulated in the past, but what we found was that when school districts went to the new policy, to the, to the new policy format, that this, this is something that, that many districts, it came from Buncombe, did this, and several other districts have done this as well, that basically outlines and, and makes that, that process very clear so that there's, so that there's, there's a consistency that can be had. And I don't mind what that number is, I just feel like the consistency is important. Just keep in mind that we, we've got a, a finite number of school buses and a, a number of roads to travel. So as that, as that number moves down from 10, let's say, to five, what that means is, is that now we've got more roads to travel. Now, keep in mind, this also doesn't mean that we're not going to go, we've still got to get kids within a mile of their house. And so, for instance, I'm going to have to go all the way to the end of Shelton Laurel to get kids to, to a mile of their house, even if there's one kid up there. I've still got to go from, to the end of that road to get those kids home. And so there's lots of roads like that, especially out in rural communities, so we simply have to travel just to get within a mile of home. And where this comes into play many times is not in those areas, but it's, it's running up into the country club and the area above the country club. It's running through every street in town. It's running through Nineveh or Hillside. And how do we, how do we take our routes through there so that we're as efficient as we possibly can and still trying to get kids as close to home as we can?
What are your thoughts, Todd?
Well, I, I personally like it. I, I don't know that, that I'm, and I'm coming to you saying that I want to change that, but I certainly want to make sure you're comfortable with it, because at the end of the day, that, you know, that's, that's where the, the responsibility lies, and I don't want to be trying to impose a policy that, that you as a group might not be comfortable with. You know, would I be comfortable with that, that number moving down a little bit? Yeah, I, I don't think that that would cost us that much. I, I don't like the idea of us getting to a point that we can't be consistent. So in other words, you know, having that number be one or two or three would really do, it really would concern me, because that would mean that we're running a whole lot of more roads and kids are even longer getting home than they are now.
And your efficiency rate goes down.
Yeah, exactly. Which, and, and, and keep in mind, that goes back to that first conversation we had about efficiency. So the, the less efficient we are, then the more responsibility the local agency shoulders in paying for the transportation costs. You know, my goal is to try to get us to 100% so that we can limit the, the num, the amount of that cost that falls back on the local agency. But the more roads you travel, and we're right there at that edge, I mean, we, we certainly are in that, we're right now on the, on that cusp of 100%. We could, we could have a really good year with a lot of riders and be at 100%. We could also have our ridership fall off a little bit and really struggle to be at 97 or 98%.
Has your date already hit that you need attendance on?
That, that date is the end of September. So we do our bus count at the end of September and turn that into the state, and at that point, we'll know. I do feel like we're really full this year. We, we, we've had good problems this year. We've had, had, had problems with buses being overcrowded, that we're having to reroute buses and move some buses around to try to keep our bus numbers within the legal capacity. That's a really, e, even though we, we may complain about that, that's a really good problem to have, because that means your buses are full, and your buses are efficient when they leave, leave the yard. Much better to have that problem than to have the problem of what are we going to do? We've only got 12 or 19 kids on this bus.
You know, the thing that concerns me is that a lot of times you hear, the traffic's backed all the way out in the road, da, 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 and then you watch a bus go in there with six or eight kids on it, and you think, well...
Right.
You could let your kid ride the bus, we're going to do that for you.
Right.
And then you wouldn't have to be in that traffic. But I mean, a lot of it, I know, is convenience for the parent to get them gone and go to work.
Exactly.
But it does, it seems like it's, it's an ongoing issue every year, especially the first couple of three days, because everybody wants to bring their kid to school on that first day.
We certainly want to create a system where people want to ride the bus, because that, that's how, that's how we are funded. We are funded because people find that the bus is a, is a valid form of transportation getting your kids to and from school. So I'm not asking to, to even, even, even begin in a dialogue about changing that number from 10. I just want you to be aware that that's there. This is more, that was more of an awareness conversation as you might, you know, get pushed back from the community. You know, I, I am certainly willing to engage in a discussion about is that, is that the appropriate number? I just wanted to make sure that you knew that that number existed and was there, so that as we have those conversations, we kind of know what that background, what that background is.
Well, if some of those areas that, that outline are rural areas, do we have a bus that can haul from K through 12 instead of having one bus and another bus run the same route?
We could, we could certainly do that. We have historically chosen not to do that, because...
When I went to school, we did. We had K through 12 on one bus.
I, I, I see, I see the, the valid argument in doing that, but at the same time, in many cases, we've not got a, a, we've got too many students to hand, to, to be able to do that. For instance, if we look at, at the students riding from the Riverbend Bus that ride down into that area of, of, of Upper Fines Creek, and we look at the, the high school bus, there will be too many kids to ride both of them. In fact, some of our buses with the highest load count on them are the buses that go to the far reaches of the community. Nobody really wants to ride the bus when it's 10 minutes away from school, but it's going to take them 45 minutes to get home because of the route that bus takes. Whereas, and, and for many of those students that may live in the outlined areas, whether it be Crusoe, or whether it be Fines Creek, Jonathan Valley, those kids are much more likely to be, to be our bus riders.
Yes, okay. One other question. How many of our buses, like our elementary school or whatever, how many of our buses have to make two routes?
Most of that is in the elementary school. Most of those buses are in the elementary school, and it really...
It's not all elementary?
It, it is not all of them, but, but we have an increasing number this year that have had to move to two routes. And typically, what we do when we have a two-route bus is, is, is we will take that bus and we will try to get as many students off that bus as quickly as we can on the first load and, and then come back. So the first load may not be, maybe back at the school by 3:30. You know, it's, and, and most of the time, that comes from having a bus that, we don't have any more buses at that school, and all of a sudden, that bus has 72 kids on it, but it only is rated for 66. And so the way you fix that is you take and you try to get a, a group of 10 or 12 of them off quickly and then come back, get the rest of them, and take them home. Even those places where we have two loads, we're getting those students home by, by 4:30 or 4:45 in the afternoon, for the most part.
Yes, for the most part, it's good, so...
So, and most of those are, are close to, close to school runs, not those out in the, out in the far reaches of the community. There's just not enough time to go to Jonathan Creek twice or Fines Creek twice. Those are...
Yeah, they're short runs. That's kind of why I know clients got one, it's a short run.
Yes, sir.
And who, which other elementary are we, right now, that's got two?
I can tell you that North Canton does that, Ginoluska does that, Hazelwood does that. We may have a few more that I'm not thinking of, but I know that those three off, off the cuff just, just are in that group. And I think we have one bus that is teetering at Pisgah and Kent Middle School that's, that's teetering on one load and two loads, primarily because of the Jones Cove and Broyle Hill traffic. And that bus really depends on how many Broyle Hill students we're taking home, and we have to kind of be prepared with that bus to, to make it a two-load bus. If we've got 16 or 17 Broyle Hill kids, keep in mind, a high school bus can only hold 44. And if we've got half of those, that bus full all, all ready when that, when it leaves the yard with, with that group of students, we've had to, had to move back and forth, and we'll probably be at two loads on that bus. But I think that's the only middle school, high school bus we have that's doing that right now.
One other quick question, I'm sorry. The seatbelt issues on these buses, and, you know, some districts are beginning to get seatbelts on school buses, does that cut down on the capacity?
It does not cut down on the capacity. Jackson County, there's several other districts that are a pilot program. I really feel like that, that seatbelts on school buses are a couple of years away from being something that we just see. I don't think the state's got the funding to be able to, to implement that and retrofit all of our buses and the entire fleet with, with seatbelts, but I think that in the next couple of years, what you're going to see is a school bus, when it rolls out of the factory in North Carolina, it has seatbelts on it. And the way there's, and I, I actually really like the design of those seatbelts. I want, I want to give it a year or two to make sure that design doesn't change before we, before we jump into having a conversation about are we ready to take that on? But the way those seatbelts work, they're, they're designed for either three students to sit in the seat or two students to sit in the seat. So they actually have three belts, three lap belts and shoulder belts. And if there's two students riding, they buckle into the center two buckles, and you can have two students buckled in. But if there are three students riding in an elementary school, all three seatbelts can be buckled as well. And so it really doesn't cut, cut down on the capacity of the bus. It probably does make it a little, feel a little bit tighter, because not only are you in that seat and, and squi, you know, squished in there, but now you're, now you're bound down to that seat.
Yeah, that's a lot. I knew they were pilots, and I knew it would be a while. And I'm, I'm, as far as retrofitting buses, I disagree with that, but that's, that's a waste of expense there, just getting these buses.
But, but I...
Once the state decides to go that route, just whatever.
What you're going to, what you're going to see is the state eventually, in the next few years, decide to go that way, and then it's going to take 20 years to get all those buses recycled through. And it's ju, that's just going to be the, the way that that happens. I, I just have a feeling that's probably going to be the, the most logical way that I see that playing out. I don't think it's a bad thing. I think those districts that are doing it have seen some increase in costs, but it's not been substantial with those seats. But, and it hasn't, it has improved, especially in the elementary schools and middle schools. It's helped with discipline, because those students are not able to jump up, move around, and the bus driver feels much more comfortable on that bus with those students not able to, to engage in those behaviors.
Sit down and, yeah.
Exactly.
Well, if you, if we, if we were to implement a policy of ten or more riders, what, what are the ramifications? What areas would be affected and how would those things be affected?
I, I couldn't begin to tell you. Um...
Does water or land teams be affected?
No, but, but, but here, here's the thing you want to keep in mind, is that we still have to get within a mile of their home. Um, and that's the one that catches most of our rural areas. Um, and, and I've not, we've not really had this conversation too many times in rural, in, in, in the rural parts of Haywood County. Um, this really hasn't come into effect because almost every time that we have this conversation, well, if you look at where they live, I'm gonna have to get, I'm gonna be on that road in order to get within a mile of their house and there's only one place to turn around and that's at the end. And so in order to go up in there, I'm gonna have to do it this way. So in the outline areas, that really doesn't affect. Where this affects us more often than not is in town. And, and, and that's because in, in most of the areas in town, we have a, a vicinity type model where we might run down East Street and have everybody two blocks from East Street walk to East Street to pick up the bus. We might go down Main Street and Hazelwood and we expect everybody on Kentucky Avenue to come, to come over to, to Hazelwood Avenue to pick up the bus, um, where, so that we're not zigzagging in, in and out every one of these streets. If we start doing that in order to be consistent, my, my real concern is, is that, that we end up on the, on the town side, especially having lots and lots and lots of, of additional miles added to those buses, um, in many cases, walkable miles.
So if you went through the community like Hillside and Tears, that would...
Well, well, actually, we, we had, we drop enough students to, we drop a ton of students off in Hillside. There's a lot of those kids that, that ride the bus and we're happy for that. Um, we go through Hillside and come back out Park Street and, and really everybody feeds off of that. So we don't go off of that, that main route through Hillside. We go up Hillside, keep on going around Park Street, come back out on East Street. And so everybody that's in that, in that, those neighborhoods come to, come to Hillside and pick up the bus there.
Good job.
Is there a direct correlation between what gas prices are and the number of kids who ride the bus? Or what are economies why?
You know, I, I could, I couldn't tell you that. But, and, and the only reason I say that is because since I've been doing transportation, we've been blessed with low gas prices. Now, low, low gas prices for us create another problem altogether budgetarily with our budget rating because it really makes it hard to keep that rate at a hundred percent. Um, but from a, from a tra-, a student, a student driver standpoint, I really couldn't tell you. I've, I've heard that and it makes sense.
Right.
Um, but at the same time, right now, our, our, our gas prices are still very low and this year we have a ton more kids riding the bus than I feel like we had last year. And I, I won't have the data for that till the end of the month. But we just feel like there's a lot more kids on our buses this year than what we've seen in the past. Any more questions?
Thank you.
I'm gonna move on. Um, one more thing very quickly with bus stops. I'm sorry, Dr. Garrett, you thought I was finished? Ju- just two more minutes. Uh, bus stops, one of the things we, this is one of our goals this year, and that's to minimize our, our bus stop violations. Uh, we spoke to our drivers. We spent a long time in our driver meeting at the beginning of the year talking about awareness. Our actual bus, bus stop violations are not awful. Um, we have a bus stop for every, every day, we have a bus stop approximately based on the, the state data, one for every fourteen buses we have. If you look across the state, that, the, the ratio is usually one for every four buses in the state of North Carolina will have a bus, a bus stop arm violation at some point during that route that day. Um, and so I feel like we're, we're in a better place, but at the same time, that doesn't mean that that's something that we, that we don't want to keep at, at the top of our priority list. We've changed our camera system, um, and, and that camera system actually now has, has two cameras on the side and one camera at the back pointing down. These are coming on all of our new buses. So every bus we, we get that's new, we're gonna try to be able to put, we're gonna try to budget and, and carefully plan so we can get these on to those, those buses. And what that does is it makes it much easier for us to be able to see when someone violates that stop-arm law and runs by a school bus. Uh, unfortunately, um, if that, if that bus doesn't have cameras on it, it's almost impossible for that bus driver to see and, and identify the driver, get the license plate, and worry about the safety of the kids that are getting off the bus. Because what we've told our drivers is I don't want you worrying about that car. I want you worried about those kids on the bus. Let's take care of them. And if we get the other information, great. If we don't, we're gonna deal, we'll deal with it however we can. Um, but the other thing that we're doing is we're looking at those places that we have issues and trying to work with local police. They've been fantastic to work with this year. We've had lots of conversations with several of them just about danger areas and places that we were concerned about, not necessarily that we wanted them to go out and play gotcha with drivers in those areas, but at least having a presence in those areas and maybe pulling some drivers over and explaining to them what the stop-arm law is. Cause there's some places where the law is very confusing. Um, I, I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm gonna tell you that, you know, it's simple on a two-lane road and it's pretty simple on a, on a four-lane road with a big divider in the middle of it. But there's a lot of stuff in between that's very complicated and hard for the general public to fully understand. Should I stop? Shouldn't I stop? I was in a place...
You just stop regardless.
I, I was in, I was at a spot yesterday and...
I'm not sure, yeah.
I was at a spot yesterday and, um, I, I literally, I watched drivers over and over again. They would slow down, stop, go, ease up. They, you just, you could tell. They just didn't know, what am I supposed to do here? And then inevitably somebody flies on by and goes, and then after that, everybody else goes. Well, in, in this case, that's exactly what happened and about nine people ran the stop-arm, um, just simply because once the first person goes and everybody else is unsure of it, they're gonna follow the leader and go right along with it. Um, so, you know, we, we're trying to work with, with, you know, with the community and with the police departments to try to, to get some awareness out there on what that is. I know we've had some great articles, um, from a lot of different media sources that have helped with that. But, um, that is something we want, we want to focus on this year.
You can go and look on the brochures they give you. It's confusing whenever you try to read.
Yeah, it's very confusing, very confusing. Um, two more things and I, and I'll, and I'll be finished. One of them is, um, just a process that we want to use with you to, um, get drivers' hours approved by school, to school board. And I don't know if we've ever sat down and actually had a conversation about how we do this. Um, drivers' hours are constantly changing. Um, and so what I would like to do is evaluate this four times a year, once a quarter, um, probably starting in October, and just basically bring you a list of all of our drivers with how many hours they have, um, currently set as their route hours. Um, and then any changes that might have happened after this first one, any changes that might have happened between that and the next time it happens. So the reason I want to do that is because their route hours have a big, a big, um, you know, a big determining factor on, on what kind of benefits they get. Once they go over four hours, once they go over six hours, those benefits change. Um, and we constantly are having drivers, let's say I've got a driver that, you know, for the last three months has red-driven this road and it takes fifteen minutes to drive and he does it twice a day. Well, all of a sudden, he doesn't have to drive that road anymore because the kids that live up there in high school, they've become eleventh graders now, they've all got cars, and we don't have to go up in there anymore. Um, well, that driver's hours is just now, their driver's hours just changed by thirty minutes. Um, and when those kinds of things happen, I think that, that you need to understand that and, and see that. But I wanted a real clear way to do that. So with, with, as long as you're okay with that, I'd like to start bringing that to you about once a quarter. Not necessarily that I'm gonna come up here and present that to you, but at least include it in your packet with personnel so that you can see those drivers and see any of them that might have changed from one group to another. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about that when that happens. Yes, sir?
I know at one time we talked about when the drivers check in to, you know, check their buses and stuff. And have we gone any further on that process of, I know there was something about putting on the bus?
We can do that. And, and, and what we've seen is there's some other districts that have tried it. It's very difficult for our, our drivers that are, that are employees of multiple different groups in the school. And the reason for that is if you've got a custodian, they, they really don't want to clock out in the building and then walk around the building to the back, get on their bus and then try to clock back in because they're losing that four minutes of time in between. And, and I want to be sensitive to those employees. I, I completely get that. Um, and so what we've watched is other districts have, have had, have tried to implement this same plan, have had, had, had that exact issue because of the number of people that they have that are in, in different agencies. And so what I'm waiting for is for, for one of those groups to be able to fully implement that and get it right and get it to the point that it's fair to those drivers before we take that step. I, I just don't want to be, I don't want to be the first one out of the gate on that. And so I'm, I am watching very patiently as other districts are trying to figure that problem out. And once somebody does and figures out where it's fair and equitable, we, you know, we certainly will look at it and see if that's a direction we could go. Cause I think it could make us more efficient. I just don't want to penalize people in making us more efficient. Um, the last thing I've got, and this is just something I want to plant a seed with, um, and, and this is my big ending point, is driver salary. Uh, the average driver salary in west North Carolina is twelve dollars and eleven cents. If we look at Haywood County, we're, our, our starting, this is for starting pay. This is for a starting driver. Ours is eleven dollars, forty-five cents. If you look on both sides of us in Jackson County and in Buncombe County, it's much higher than that. Um, much higher than the, even the western North Carolina average. I really like, would like for us to begin to explore, um, coming up with a plan that would allow us to compensate our drivers more closely to at least the, um, average starting salary for western North Carolina, twelve dollars and eleven cents. Um, basically if we were to do that and to do that and try to be fair and, and, and stretch it across all of our drivers for all seventy-five of those bus routes, um, to get us up to twelve dollars and to also give a, a, a comparable raise to the other drivers that may not be in that starting group, you're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, and I will certainly be glad to go out there and look and give you some real finite figures to exactly what that costs.
Would you do it just based on, I'm gonna give everybody a quarter an hour? Or would you look at it as I'm gonna give this group, are you, how would you implement that?
What, what I would like to, what, what I would like to do is, is look at, and, and, and most of these, you can tell across, across the, the, the region are grouped in groups. So groups in this group, they're at about this price. And, and I'd like to look at those and try to get us within those groups to about what that average is. And so it might mean that, that you've got some drivers that we have that are on the higher end. It might be more closer to the, to the actual average in, in west North Carolina. It might not, might not be as, as benefit as much from this. Uh, but at least get us to the point that we're, we're looking at compensating our drivers within what that average is. Um, you know, and...
Keep in mind, that's a recurring expense.
That, that is, that is a recurring expense. But I want to go back now to what I said earlier. Uh, because what I said earlier, we look at our budget and our funding formula, as long as we stay, um, at a budget rating of a hundred percent, when you pay that in the first year, that, let's say that twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, the state of North Carolina in the second year is gonna pick that salary up and you're not gonna have to repay it. And so if you, if you put that bud-, let's say you put that budget in there for two years, then over those two years, you're gonna gain fifty thousand dollars back into your state's, state budget. Um, and, and it's not gonna, it's not gonna continue to cost you that reoccurring amount. It's one of the rare places where you can actually, um, help benefit an employee, an employee group while at the same time not have to, have to be, not have to bear the reoccurring expense in the future as you do that.
So Todd, in two years, it would pay for itself?
In, in two, yeah, and, and, and at the end of the year, whatever you invested is gonna pay for itself.
It'd be within two or three percent.
Yes, sir.
Worst-case scenario, really, I mean, three...
And so, so I guess, you know, the, the question I have is, is that something that, that you would be favorable enough for that I could, I could go and look? I will tell you that we have had a hard time this year. It, it's not getting any easier to find people to wake up at five o'clock in the morning and drive a school bus.
If I'm going with a hazmat driver's license and all that, it's, I'm paying quite a bit for that in my business.
I'd like you to proceed. Get some figures.
I appreciate that, gentlemen.
Cause I mean, like you said before, the mechanics when they work on the buses, they have the safety of the kids in mind when they work on buses. The driver of the buses have the lives of the kids in the buses.
You, you are absolutely correct.
So we're paying them this to...
Slap them in the face.
Yeah, I think they definitely need to look to go.
Put something together.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good job.
Just two more minutes.
It's actually six or something. Six, five fifteen? Good job. Okay. When you're ready. Mr. Hines and Dr. Garrett.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, I promise you I will not take as long as Todd did. I may not be as thorough. Me and Todd go back a long way. I want to rib him like that. Tonight, Dr. Garrett asked me to update you. Uh, at a previous work session, we had talked a little bit about, uh, teacher supplements, the local county supplement that teachers receive, uh, in addition to their base state pay. And at the previous meeting, we talked about, uh, teachers who were leaving Haywood County, going to other counties, particularly, you know, the big three or Hendersonville, uh, Buncombe County and Asheville City Schools, mainly because they're in close proximity and the teacher could still live in Haywood County and drive to those locations and work. And it is a substantial increase in pay, uh, simply based on the local supplement that is offered. At that time, I gave you, if you look in your packet, um, you have a, this sheet, there, there's about three or four, front and back. Um, this is the last, uh, available aggregate of all of the local supplements in North Carolina that was put together. This is two thousand thirteen. Uh, and as we know, the big three that we compete with, Hendersonville, Buncombe and Asheville City have all three raised their local supplements since this was put together. So it could be even a, um, I guess you might say worse situation than it was in two thousand thirteen. But if you look at it, um, back then, uh, Haywood County Schools ranked seventy-third in local supplement pay out of a hundred and fifteen LEAs in North Carolina. And, uh, as, uh, Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte released the other day, we have moved from fifteen to eleventh in the state in performance, yet we haven't moved anywhere on rewarding our teachers for that great performance in, in Haywood County Schools. If you look at the other sheet that I provided, uh, this one, the spreadsheet, it does not have any names on there intentionally because it has some growth data that I thought was important for you. So I didn't put any names on there. Uh, but it does tell you the teaching position, tells you the school site, uh, tells you the county or LEA where they went, except for two of them. We have, we know they marked that they were going to another LEA. We just haven't been able to identify which one yet. Uh, it tells you the years of experience that those teachers had. And then the last column tells you whether they met or exceeded growth. The ones that are blank are, uh, positions where data does not exist. So if you're a encore teacher or if, such as music, art, that sort of thing, you would not have growth data. And, or if you're an EC teacher, you do not have growth data because you don't have enough students, uh, to compile that average. So, uh, in looking at it though, uh, we, I think at the last meeting, we're at about, we were at about eighteen teachers that had left since June. Uh, we're now up to twenty-four. As you can see, all but one met or exceeded growth. And then those teachers that didn't have data, uh, they would all be proficient or higher on their, uh, standards of evaluations. All of these teachers are proficient or higher. Most of them are accomplished or distinguished. Uh, on this particular one, I had the spreadsheet calculate for you. This was a hundred and sixty-five years of experience that has left, uh, if you total all of the experience. And I was thinking about it earlier today and I was telling Dr. Garrett before we came over here to really put this in perspective. Uh, if you think about Riverbend Elementary, Riverbend has twelve classroom teachers. They all meet or exceed growth. Most of them exceed growth. Uh, they have twelve there. Last year, Riverbend was number one in the state in elementary schools out of, what was it, a thousand something up and over?
About eight hundred and ninety last year.
Prelimarily, you know, they're close to that again this year. They're in the top ten definitely. Uh, and this is, if you try to put this in perspective, this is like two Riverbend Elmenaries getting up and leaving. Okay? And, and so that's, that's hard to think about. Uh, and, and another thing that I thought about this afternoon, uh, regardless of whether they leave or what county they go to, the ones that are still here, uh, we think deserve a pay grade, uh, on the local side and that they have earned that and they have shown that in the performance that they have given. So, yeah, I'm open to any questions, uh, that you might have.
I was just gonna say, I think the last time we talked about this, I mean, we was, we did have something set up. I know Mr. Francis and Jim was on it, trying to do the supplement, raise it up percentage, so on and so on. Two thousand eight hit, pretty much nine, don't, don't have money.
Yeah.
I mean, what is the solution to get the teachers supplement up so that we are? I've always, I've always, when we compare ourselves to Buncombe County, I know that's the next big city, I mean, county.
But they're competitive though.
But, but, I mean, you're, you're not really comparing apples to apples when it comes to the county. I mean, because they've got a lot more money coming in from taxes. I mean, there's taxable property and everything's coming in. So just taking out all, all of that, what is the solution to help our teachers in the supplement?
I tell you what it used to be. Like Haywood County's always been a really good school system. You know, not only, you know, even in years past, we've been, you know, the top fifteen percent and, you know, finally today, the top ten percent. It's always been a nice place to live, nice place to have your children grow up. We did not really feel the competitiveness with Buncombe County because if you go across the line, it's only three or four or five percent. Okay, but what we have done in Haywood County, we've not increased that supplement since two thousand eight. Other counties, Buncombe, Asheville City, Transylvania and Henderson, they have all increased. This past year, Buncombe County received three million additional dollars from their county commissioners so that they could pay their teachers a higher supplement. They're now at thirteen percent. Asheville City Schools just went to sixteen percent. Transylvania and Henderson are twelve and thirteen. Those are who we compete with. And like, you know, Jason has explained to you, we have more and more teachers leaving because in, in a lifetime career, thirty years, if you go to Buncombe County or any of those that I just mentioned, you'll make fifty-seven to fifty-nine thousand dollars more in your entire career. That's a lot of money.
Do you think that realistically with the funding formula we got now and all the other budget concerns we have, that we can realistically come up with some more supplement for our teachers with the existing amount of money? amount of money we're getting? Are we gonna have to go as a board and ask the taxpayer of Haywood County to step up and...
Mr. Chairman, in my belief, there's only two ways to do this. One is you take what you have, that 15.1 million, and in order to do, you know, each half of a percent is $250,000. So if you go up three percent, you can see how much that's gonna cost, $3 million, of course. Okay, where do you get that $3 million? You would have to take it from your local budget, which 64% of your local budget is personnel, so you would be cutting personnel and programs like we've had to do this year. Or the, the other alternative is, is to go to the county commissioners and ask them for the funding formula, plus an additional X amount so that you can actually raise that supplement. Those are the only two, those are the only two alternatives that you have.
Could you figure how many teachers we'd have to cut if we went that way?
If you did $3 million, or if you did $3 million from our local budget, it would be...
A whole bunch of teachers.
It'd be a lot.
A lot of teachers we'd have to cut.
That's what I'm getting.
60 teachers.
That's too much in my head.
This year, the...
I think that's a lot.
So what you're doing is you're cutting teachers, increasing classroom size, but you're gonna get more money.
But they give us...
That's, that's not, I mean, that's not what we're deciding to do, and we're not deciding anything. No, no.
No.
We're just talking.
But that's just one way you could do it.
That's one idea, but that's...
Last time we talked about looking at how our teacher-student ratio, faculty-student ratios compared to these schools, did we look at that?
No, because what, I think what we had decided last time, Mr. Rogers, is we would have a committee to look at this. And tonight, I was going to, to remind us that we're, that we need to go ahead. If we're going to look at a committee, then they need to go ahead and begin very soon because, you know, we start on budgets in December. And I think at that time, we had talked about, you know, having a well-represented population on this. I thought about having maybe, you know, up to you, of course, Principal of the Year, you know, which would be Mr. Collins, of course. And then we have a PAPA, Principal Assistant Principal Association, that would be Todd Barbie. So you've got a high school and a middle school person. Your Teacher of the Year, which was, you know, announced today, a Clyde Elementary teacher. An AP, which would, you know, you'd try to make it as cross demographically as you possibly could. Central office should have a representative, and then have an elementary, middle, and high teacher, which we've already named the elementary, so you would have a middle and high. And then have a board member on it, maybe have someone from our county commissioners to serve on this, and even someone from your business and industry. And then we would be the, Mr. Hines and I would act as facilitators of it.
We could get it put together by the board meeting that's coming up. Right, just see if we could get people that would agree to serve on that.
Yes, we could fill in these blanks.
We could fill in the blanks and then take action on it.
And then the board could approve it on the 19th.
And what, what exactly is a committee, I mean?
Just to see what...
It's just to see, come up with ideas of what can be done to increase that supplement. And then any kind of research that needs to be done, you know, of course, you know, if it's in finance, then Ms. Gardner will be doing that. If it's personnel, then, then we'll be working on that.
It's gonna take some leadership to do it.
It is. And Mr. Chairman, I do need your advice on this. You know, if you're going to ask the county commissioner to be on it, would the best means be to write a, a formal letter to them and request that?
I think so.
Okay, then, then will you authorize me to do that?
Let's get together, tomorrow, we'll put a letter together and request them that.
Okay.
And with that way, they'll have, they'd like to have...
We could even email it too, to...
Ira, yep.
Can you have additional questions? Because this is new for us, too.
I think Ms. Gardner's probably the finance, Ms. Gardner's probably be on that as well, finance, she could answer any kind of...
We were gonna have her be like a facilitator to where it would not take up the space, but she could provide the information for us. And we had thought since you were finance that you might want to serve on it.
I think so.
Can I check you off?
Good idea.
And you'll be open to the public, I mean, anyone can attend these meetings.
Very good. We might do something.
We are. Thank you.
We, we, you know, aren't proposing any particular thing at this point. That's, we want the committee to study it and see what is possible. And I don't think anyone is suggesting that we could get to 16 or anything like that. But we need to, if we can, give the teachers some, somewhat of a raise on the local side to show them that, that we do appreciate what they're doing and that we're trying.
The original format was everybody got X percent.
Right.
I, I like that.
And, and even in these other counties, you know, that, that 12 to 16% is not across the board. A new teacher would start out in, in Buncombe County at 6%, somewhere in that range. And then after, you know, several years of service, you work up to that 12. And the same thing in the other counties. So it is a graduated scale. Not everyone's getting 12 or 16. But, you know, like you see from the thing, we're, we're having 15, 20-year teachers go to get that, you know, but...
Because that's where they get it.
But, you know, great, great working conditions, great schools, great community, great students, great administrators, great board members. Goes a long way if you're close. But once it gets as wide as it is now, you know, people start looking at it from a retirement perspective and how it affects their retirement, and they're like, you know, Buncombe County's a nice county, too. And they have nice kids, and they have a good community, and so it's not that far a drive, you know. So it's, that, that's what we're looking at.
I would hope this committee would look at more than just supplement. You know, there's a whole lot of other driving factors.
There are many other reasons.
Why people leave a job besides just money. Job satisfaction, ability or potential to grow or advance are just as important as money in a lot of cases.
And we have exit survey data that, that we can share with the committee that, as to... And I, I was thinking this afternoon, it might be good for this committee to invite a few of these teachers who have left to come in and, because right now, we're kinda speculating. We're saying, yeah, they definitely left to go get this money. Maybe not. I mean, it might have been some other things and the money tipped them, but we really need to ask them and be able to do follow-up questions that a survey you can't do and say, is this really what your intention was? And would an increased supplement have kept you here or not? Or was it something else, you know, so...
We, we did the Teacher of the Year. Last year, I remember we asked a question in the interview process about retention, specifically about retention. And I remember last year, Sari wasn't the only one to mention it.
Correct, yes, sir.
As a matter of fact, I'm pretty sure.
And we...
It was one of the ones that wasn't, it's great to mention.
Staff development.
Staff development was a big one.
And I think Haywood County provides more staff development than anyone. You know, when I talk to other HR people at, at our regional meetings, they're amazed at what, in this October 8th thing that Dr. Nolte and C and I put together is absolutely unheard of, you know. That's amazing how much PD they can get for free. And we're, you know, again, we, last year and again this year, we're paying about $60,000 out of federal money to help them get National Board Certification. We're paying all the fees and everything, so... We've got 59 teachers right now that, that have successfully completed the first two components, and now they're working on the second two, so, so that helps, too. So, yes, there are a lot of other factors, absolutely. And, and again, we've got three teacher working condition surveys now. You know, they do that every two years, and the latest one just came out, which you can look at by school, and, you know, that's, that's more good data for the committee as well.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hines.
Yes, sort of thing.
Thank you, Dr. Garrett. Mr. Buchanan.
Good evening. I give you, each of you has got a My Building and Grounds minutes. This is what we're gonna be going over at our next Building and Grounds meeting. Dr. Garrett had asked me to touch base with you about the Brown Avenue project. Gavin Brown, the town man or mayor, had expressed concern about us not about us having reservations about funding the Brown Avenue project. We went back through board meetings, Building and Grounds. On September 14th, Building and Grounds did approve to match the funds up to... The maximum amount the matching funds was, was $110,000. So Building and Grounds did vote to approve that. The school board did vote to approve that, up to a maximum of $110,000, which would put the school board putting in $55,000, ultimately is what it says. They have been working on drawings. Our biggest concern is if the board would like to continue with that. I know we've already voted on it, but just to make sure that the mayor understands where we're coming from and that we are still interested in that project, so...
Mr. Chairman, I think we, we need to really look to have a couple. It'd be safe for the kids, for one, they wouldn't have to cross over the roads. And it, it'd help out the whole school system up there.
I agree with that, Mr. Wong.
I'm sorry?
Well, now, I mean, are they a concern? It's gonna be more than that or something? I mean, what?
No, I think he just wants to make sure a committee...
Well, it sounds like that's something...
That number was, is about eight years old. So the board does need to be prepared. And the numbers that we looked at, we got together in March, I believe. I was just, had started whenever we had a meeting there with the town and with architects to do our proposals, and they're still giving us ideas. They've not nailed down an idea or anything as to what the final project's gonna look like. So now, we're just speculating on cost.
Now, what I can remember about it, they're shifting the road that's going straight up through metal. They're shifting it over next to the railroad tracks.
Over to the railroad tracks.
Now, how close are they gonna be able to get to the railroad tracks?
Pretty close. They can put the road close to the railroad tracks, you just can't put a building close to the railroad tracks.
Well, I mean, even though the road's close to railroad tracks, they still don't have to stay in for, or however, however long a big railroad.
They have a number of ideas that they've already drew out, and it's really gonna come down to funding. The grant that the town secured is for the road. All other costs, the town and the school board will have to pick up. So parking, landscaping, sidewalks, da, 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 da. So those, those items are not yet clear.
Well, it sounds like the funding's probably gonna be more. I've got my daughter and Mr. Francis's daughter just started sixth grade. Something needs to be done about it. I don't know whether you're going to need to put any more bushes up there except just pave a whole thing where people can come in and out. Now, when we start talking about putting bushes, that's gonna be something else.
Well, you're talking bushes, sidewalks, lighting, I mean, there's a number of things that plays into this cost that it depends on how they shift the road, how they do the parking law, and how we vote to proceed with it. I would anticipate the number being much more than $110,000.
And our, our part being $55,000.
Agreed upon $55,000.
We agreed to put 55.
We agreed to match...
Up to $110,000.
Up to $110,000.
Correct.
So we should be looking at $110,000.
No.
$55,000.
Our total matching cost was $110,000.
Okay, so 55.
The town and the school board would put towards the grant.
That's all we've already voted to approve.
Approve the 55,000.
Our max right now is 55,000.
Is there a deadline on the grant?
Not that I have seen.
Well, I mean, we've approved it, it's 55,000. I, I mean, if they're still gonna do it, but if they're gonna do it, they need to quit. Because the longer they wait, the more expensive it's gonna cost to do it.
Well, and they're, they're still in the design phase.
How many designs do they need?
The right one. You only need one, but you gotta have the right one.
It seems to me like they need to get their design together, and if it exceeds our size, exceeds 55,000, we got a bug to get. Set, see him?
Well, I understood whenever this project came up, that the DOT was supposed to come up with a plan and get back with us.
Right.
Is what I understood about it.
But you're talking about the DOT coming up with a plan with the city, with the city leaders. Have you ever seen DOT and city leaders work together?
Oh, no.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
DOT wants to come up with a plan that would move the road and make our situation better at Wainville Middle School. You know, I'm all for it.
Well, yeah.
You know, $50,000 or $110,000, if it's safer for the kids, it'd be money well.
Oh, yeah, well, like I said, what I've seen up there, I mean, I, I have no problem with the project. But now, when you start talking about money,
Yeah.
Money, I mean, that's where it comes in, and I know the safety of the kids is a number one priority. But when you don't have $500,000 to throw at a project, you've got to back up and pump and figure out something else.
Question, we can approve 55, we can't approve a blank check.
No, no, that's, that's where we are today. See what their plan is. Like Walt said, I was in that meeting, too. The DOT was supposed to do the road.
The DOT is working on the design.
So we need to find out who sells the charging.
So, but they're, they're still designing.
And they'll be a year or so further designing.
I don't have that date.
Yeah, let's, we'll talk about, there's... What we've got now is $55,000, and just, I think what we need to do is just communicate to Mayor Brown that we're gonna...
We're still...
We're still...
In support of the project.
We got our skin in the game, just like, we're not, we're not changing anything or altering anything. We're just recommunicating the fact that we... Yes.
Max of 55,000.
Yeah, we're, we're all in. We'd like to see the project go a little faster.
All right, sounds good.
And then, just for information, I got some estimates back for our HVAC projects with the GMs, and those should be before you, my design fees were just a little bit higher. My project was, is estimated to be higher. We won't know exactly until we bid.
Bid it out.
But I wanna get with Building and Grounds at our next meeting so we can discuss that further.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr....
Any questions?
Thank you, Peter, that's the top part there. What about the time, please?
Mister, the owner of Window Ren, called, he has a free guy that is concerned about two trees falling on his property because they're dead.
Are they on us or on him?
They, he says they're on us, and he's offered to let his tree person give me a price to take them down. I am having contractors go out and price this job to see what it's gonna cost us to have these trees removed, just so we're being fair and equitable with everybody. And then meet with him to see what his needs are and what he wants. So that was, that's just kinda the information to let you know. I counted about 30 trees along the edge of the road that borders his property that I think he's concerned about. I don't know how many more is there. So I will know more probably at our next board meeting and Building and Grounds meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, is anything else that we need to discuss before our next board meeting?
So you move it to the 19th.
19th.
Move it to the 19th, okay? And I apologize for that, I need to keep my job.